I'd like to call to order the May 26 meeting of Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, Jacinda Walpers.
Mr. Dallow.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Ms. Casali.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next is approval of the agenda.
Move.
Support.
Moved by Dallow, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the May 11 meeting. If there are no corrections.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Oppone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, first item, under correspondence, Jeff English, Prime Building Company. Okay, no one's standing, so Mr. Winn.
I can explain this, Mr. Chairman. This involves the property, they commonly know as Providence Park, across the street from Township offices, the multiple family. And the site plan had been approved a couple of years ago, and due to some work with the road commission, there's Jeff, they were required by the road commission to line up one of their driveways with the driveway directly across the street. And as a result of that, they had to change the configuration of that one building. So they consolidated buildings, put them together, and now are having parking from the back versus parking from the side. It's actually, not only does it achieve the objective of lining the driveways up, it actually results in, I think, a nicer entrance to the project as well. I think it's more of a housekeeping matter than anything else, but I felt it was necessary to bring this to the Planning Commission to validate that conclusion.
Okay. Any questions for the planner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve a modification to the site plan for Shelby Manor Apartments, Site Plan 12-13, to permit modifications to the location of Building Number One.
Support.
They moved by Moore, support by Oppone.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallow.
If it's okay to modify the Building Number One, we combining Building Number One and Number Two to one building. So if we modify the motion, if possible.
That's fine, so it's referencing, yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
Okay. The supporter?
Yes.
Okay. Call the roll, Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Chair of the CHS. Okay, next, under site plans, Number 14-14, PUD Number Three, Stephen Orr, Lads Real Estate Development.
Hi, Pete Snyder from Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township here, representing petitioner. Essentially, this is a project that was before you approximately a year ago, Barclay Lake Village Number Two, where you approved 13 units on about, call it five and a half acres of land. The applicant has since acquired what was an out parcel, it's shown in green on the lower board there, just over a half an acre. That out parcel was fronting DeQuinder and had a driveway out to DeQuinder. He's in the process of finalizing his acquisition. He wants to add that to the project, flip it around so that the project fronts the internal road that he's constructing. And it just cleans it up very well, and so we brought the site plan to you for your acceptance of his proposed changes. So if you have any questions, I'm certainly available, but it's substantially the same, the lots are the same characteristic, it's the same road, it's just an extra piece of parcel, an extra piece of property added to the parcel with the lots turned around.
Mr. Winn.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the reason I wanted to bring this back is this was a planned unit development, and the ordinance is pretty clear, it allows you some discretion in making a determination whether a change is substantial or significant. If it is, then you have to go back and have another public hearing. While this does increase the number of lots, it's, to me, it's so modest and the design change is so favorable because you have all the homes lining up, that I didn't, it was my conclusion that this would be a minor change, but I really wanted to make sure we have that kind of determination on the public record.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
I move to approve the revised planned unit development application for Barclay Lake condominiums to permit the development of this site for 15 detached, single-family homes, based on the following findings. This phase is a continuation of a project that started in the 1990s. The proposed new, single-family home site are larger than those in the first phase. The existing development site is an infill parcel that requires some modification of existing zoning standards to develop for single-family purposes. The use of this site for single-family homes is consistent with surrounding development patterns. The revised site plan improves the design continuity of this project. Due to limited scope of the modifications, a new public hearing will not be required.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
And Chair of the CHS. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is a site plan, Number 15-25, PUD Number One, Enclave of Shelby. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following planned unit development. Applicant: Eugene DiAgostini, Enclave Shelby LLC, 101 South Main Street, Suite 200, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. Proposed use: Planned unit development, 39 detached, single-family homes. Location: 14015 24 Mile Road, north side of 24 Mile Road, east of Shana, Sidwell Number Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 26, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the planned unit development application. The application for planned unit development and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on May 6, 2015. There were 67 property owners and five applicants were notified by first-class mail on May 6, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And could you also explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate to this district?
Yes, the present zoning is R1A, which is our residential district. Within the R1A, this type of PUD request is permitted to modify somewhat some of the provisions.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Moore, did we receive any correspondence regarding this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open the floor to the public for any comments or questions, and then I'll allow the petitioner to make concluding remarks. At this time, if the petitioner or representative is here, and if I could get your name and address for the record. Yeah, north being up is good. Been a long day.
Good afternoon and good evening. My name is Jim Eppink. I'm a landscape architect and land planner with J. Eppink Partners in Clarkston, Michigan, 9336 Sashaba Road, Clarkston, Michigan. I'm representing tonight Mr. DiAgostini and his development team, and with me as well is our project engineer, Tom Kellogg. Appreciate your time tonight and the public's time, and we've done an awful lot of, with both the Planning Commission as well as the neighbors. We've been at it since late fall, and in that time, I think, a lot of the commissioners are aware, we've had an awful lot of good meetings and dialogue with the neighbors and the residents surrounding this site, so we appreciate their time and certainly look forward to any of their thoughts and comments tonight. As the notice had indicated, we're applying tonight for a PUD approval, final approval for a PUD, 18.2 acres of land on the north side of 24 Mile Road, just east of Shana Road. The site is unique in the sense that it's split in half, about two-thirds and one-third by the Harris Drain. The drain's 120-foot easement that cuts across the lower section of the site, and it really dissects or cuts the site in half. To the north, we're taking advantage of, really, the original plan for the development, Section 13, back about 20-plus years ago, when Section 13 was really master-planned and developed. Cope's Drive is a stub street that comes into the top northeast corner of our property. We're taking advantage of that original idea, that original plan, and just simply extending Cope's Drive to the west, leading to the west, and creating a large, D-shaped or circular road system on the northern half of this neighborhood. The density for the overall project is exactly what was anticipated back 20, 25 years ago when Section 12 was developed. We are zoned R1A, and under the current zoning of R1A, it does require a larger lot than we are proposing, and in fact, it's larger, the current standards are larger than any of the surrounding lots. Our lots are the same size or larger than all the surrounding lots. The properties to the west are, or I'm sorry, to the east are R1A, and they have about a 12,000-square-foot footprint on their lot sizes. To the north and to the east are R1B, and they have just over about 11,800 square-feet lots. Our lots, on average, are about 15,000 feet in the back and smaller in the front, so although we're below current standards of R1A, we think that within the PUD, we think it's a reasonable request to stay at size or larger than the surrounding lots and appropriate with what was master-planned for the entire section. I'll go over in a minute some of the site plan changes that we've made since the preliminary PUD, but I wanted to just talk about the lower half. The southern half is comprised of 16, single-family homes. These are smaller, what we would consider almost a patio home-type style. They're really focused to be superior architecture, almost a French country feel. They're single-family, two-car garage, two cars on the driveway, so a total of four off-street parking spots. They're all have their own property boundaries and lot lines. The lots are intentionally a little bit smaller. They're just over 8,000-square-foot lots, which means that we anticipate kind of young retirees, active retirees, that just aren't looking for a lot of maintenance but still want a single-family home upstairs, two or three bedrooms, still very good-sized homes, and more than likely, existing residents who are looking to downsize from their large family homes and still stay within the township. So we think that's going to be a great, great area. It doesn't have direct access in terms of private driveways on the 24 Mile Road. We have one access on the 24 Mile Road, so directly on the 24 Mile Road, we'll have about 16 family homes that exit. The rest will come through Hunter's Grove Neighborhood to the east, and so from a traffic point of view, we're putting the same amount of traffic on the streets that was originally planned for this section, originally planned for this property. We don't anticipate any excess traffic. We're not going with high-density in this project. In terms of changes, again, I appreciate the township's participation, but more particularly the residents' participation. We heard a few things over the course of our meetings that we've incorporated into the site plan tonight. One is the whole northern portion of the property, we're proposing a 20-foot natural tree easement, and we've called that a setback. The Township Planning Department had recommended in the review letter that that gets formalized into an easement into the master deed, and we're certainly comfortable doing that. So that would be 20-foot of tree preservation around the whole northern portion. Our earlier plan at the preliminary stage showed Lot 36, that top northeast home, to not really have that 20-foot, and that, the way we had arranged it before, we had the driveways facing that side, we had that lot the same size as the rest of lots, but really what that did is it compromised that 20-foot setback. So what we've done is completely realigned all those top lots, created that northeastern lot to be quite a bit larger. It allows us to have the 20-foot easement, so that will be preserved and give that adjacent neighbor those trees in place. We've also taken all of those northern lots and flipped them. Previously, if you were coming in from Cope's Drive, you would see all the garages and all the driveways. We flipped them so that now that adjacent neighbor gets to see, number one, it gets to see all the trees, number two, it gets to see the side of a nice home. The garage is flipped, so as I drive down that street, I see the homes and not the garage doors, and we flipped those all the way down. The lots, also adjacent to the western, I'm sorry, to the eastern side, those four lots, we stretched those out a little bit as well, so those are about 145-foot deep as opposed to 130-foot deep, and we were able to do that by just making those center lots slightly smaller because of their large width. They're still very, very large lots. We had a number of engineering issues come up in the review letter. We appreciate the Fossil Con's office of taking the time to go through those. As I said, Tom Kellogg is here tonight, and we certainly will happy to address those. When I look at those comments, I really see them in two or three large buckets. One of them is in terms of the streets, and we mislabeled our drawings. Our intention is that the lower streets will be private streets, so Enclave Boulevard will be a private street. We meet the ordinance requirements in terms of a 60-foot right-of-way easement, it's not technically a right-of-way, 60-foot easement, and then in addition to that, we have another nine-foot on either side of that easement before we get to the building envelope. So we've got, from building envelope to building envelope, even though we actually don't have any homes that face each other, we would have a minimum of 78-foot from building envelope to building envelope, gives us a 28-foot back-of-curb width, 60-foot easement, and then still another nine feet on each side. Cope's Drive in the back will be a public street that has a 60-foot right-of-way. It meets the ordinance standards of 55-foot to the center line to our setback, and so we feel that we meet the ordinance there. We are proposing sidewalks in the back neighborhood, the larger homes. Right now, we have sidewalks in front of every home. The only place we don't have sidewalks is along the back of that wooded area, and very simply, just chose not to do that. I figured people are going to be walking in front of their homes on their homes. If we encroach into that wooded area, we just simply will have to take down more trees. So it's our impression, our recommendation, that we put the sidewalks just in front of the homes, and we just don't have them in front of that wooded area on one side of the street. I am not recommending, and we're not showing sidewalks on the front half. This is a smaller area. It has absolutely no through-traffic. We only have 16 families living in there. We have a 28-foot wide road, back-of-curb to back-of-curb, and the only way to effectively put sidewalks on this road because of the setbacks with a private road, I can have a 25-foot setback to the home, really what I'd have to do then is glue the sidewalks right up to the curb, so I'd put a five-foot sidewalk on each side. So now I'm at a 38-foot swath of pavement, which looks enormous. I mean, it really, you could land a helicopter. So it's our recommendation that the sidewalks aren't needed in the front. I'm all about walkable neighborhoods, but in this rare case, I think that people will walk in the streets and be able to, you know, live there pretty peacefully without having this enormous amount of pavement. We have some comments related to floodway and floodplain, and I'll allow Tom to address those or to answer your questions on those. We know very specifically that we can make that work. There really is an issue with the identified floodplain adjacent to the drain. Really what that is, is that's a line that is fairly arbitrarily drawn based on aerial photos. Our next step into final engineering is to go out and physically survey that line and to look at the hydrology of the ground. We know based on what the floodplains are telling us that that area within the building envelope can be raised, can be filled, and can be mitigated within the actual drain itself. But again, we can answer your questions specifically to that. I would respectfully, after we listen, of course, to the Commission and to the neighbors, at the end of the night, I will be asking for recommendation for final approval, and I say that specifically thinking of these engineering issues. Many of these engineering issues, or I should say, all of them, are dependent on essentially getting to engineering drawings. We have already applied for the wetland permit, for the floodway permit, but the next permits as it relates to that floodplain are very specific to this plan, and if we don't have an approved plan, it's almost a chicken-and-an-egg thing. So essentially, any approval certainly would be conditional on getting that permit. We just wouldn't be able to build the lots without that permit, so it's effectively a conditional approval, but we would appreciate that tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Winn, I'm going to call on you.
Sure. Most, just to recap, this is the final stage of the PUD process. The preliminary stage, you're just evaluating the concept of the plan. At the final stage is where we get into some of the site plan details, and most of my comments have been addressed. I had three minor submission issues. One was labeled the 24 Mile Road right-of-way, provided paving specification, and seven-foot sidewalks required along 24 Mile Road. Interior, I would not disagree with Jim about not needing them there, but we need one on 24. The two more fundamental issues we have in terms of, this is more administratively reconciling it, is he referenced the easement for the tree preservation. I don't want to be one, suggest we shouldn't preserve trees around the boundary, but you are having single-family backing up to single-family. The problem becomes, the new owner might think, well, I'm living here now, I can remove the trees, or a subsequent owner, so there has to be a clear mechanism to let people know that that 20 feet, while it belongs to you, you can't cut the trees down there. Somebody may have the expectation, well, I'm going to put a pool in, and I need to take two more trees out. We did have this problem in another sub, and it's nice to preserve trees, but you have to have a mechanism to assure that it's going to be enforced, and that can be worked out through the master deed. The second is, the bylaws should reflect, reference the site plan and the Architectural Pattern Book restrictions. There are some restrictions related to exterior architecture, protected trees, setbacks, garages, all of that should reflect what's on the plan. Again, to make sure the documents are consistent. I like the elevations they showed us. My concern would be, they sell the lot to builder B, who has no idea what these are and comes in with a different plan. So we'll have to, you know, again, we'd have to come up with an administrative mechanism to monitor that, and we've done that with the building department successfully. I just want to make sure it's all wrapped up in a neat package. The bigger concerns were the ones the engineer had about the floodplains, and again, none of that affects design if they can make it work. So, you know, there's a lot of comments on here, and I'm not adverse to moving it, pushing it forward a little bit with the understanding that these all have to be reconciled before we stamp and sign the plan as approved. So it's going to be up to the Commission to determine how you want to do that. I was very comfortable with your recommendation based on my comments, as long as they can answer the engineer's comments satisfactorily. If they can't, they're going to have to come back here anyway. So if they reduce the lots or somehow, I don't mind giving them the opportunity to correct all those things, like we did with Legacy Village at 25 and Van Dyke. So it's up to you in terms of how you want to handle this, in terms of a recommendation to the board.
Are the permits that are waiting from DEQ and, I don't know, with the Drain Commission, I don't know who else, Public Works Office, are those sufficient benchmarks to meet?
Well, I think, here's what we did with Legacy Village, and Jim was part of that with their engineers, that myself and our engineer sat down with Jim and his engineer, and we worked through the whole list, and that way, they understood what needed to be corrected. And I think we need to do that. I prefer to do that before it went to the board, so that there's a clear understanding if there's some changes that aren't going to work. I don't want to send it to the board and have it all come back. So my recommendation would be to move it forward, conditional on getting those done before it goes to the board. Dependent, of course, on public comment, any other changes that need to be made.
Okay, to the board, any questions for the petitioner?
I did have a question.
Commissioner Moore.
Hi, Mr. Eppink. Regarding the construction entrance, and I think I just found my answer, you have temporary access over the Harris Drain for the construction vehicles?
We do. Any heavy equipment, and we'll all be coming off a 24-mile road through the site, crossing the drain. There's actually a crossing there now, and we've worked with the Drain Commission in our permitting for the drain to allow us to have temporary access. We're unable to get a permanent crossing, but for the length of the construction, we'll be able to bring all the road-building equipment, clearing equipment, and, you know, basement foundations, all those type of things. We'll continue to work, and some of the neighbors have brought up good points, you know, our painters and carpenters, are they going to sneak their pickup trucks in down the adjacent road and into the back of the neighborhood? We're certainly going to monitor that. Our concern is not to deteriorate the adjacent road, so all heavy equipment will be brought through the site, through the construction.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Dallow.
So, one, for R1A, site setbacks are 15. Do they require variance from the zoning, or this is something that we could deal with here?
Actually, that's a good question, because normally, they would have to seek relief through the Board of Appeals for variances, but because this is a PUD, you can, the Planning Commission of the Board has the authority to make those adjustments as part of this plan, and I think the trade-off here is, the overall density is 2.2 units per acre, plus the lot sizes for the rear portion are consistent, if not larger, than the ones around it. So I'm very comfortable using the PUD process here versus the variance process. So yes, you can do that as part of this approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Eppink, we talked about the 20-foot buffer on the north. For the record, what is the buffer on the east and west property lines with the trees?
What is the buffer on the?
Well, when I said north, I meant...
Mr. Eppink. Back to the mic, please.
When I said the north, I meant the entire north portion, so on west, north, and east side of the entire northern portion, essentially, everything north of the drain would have that 20-foot easement. We don't have it on the back, on the southern sides. Number one, we're adjacent to the single-family lots, the one lot split to the west. There really aren't any significant trees there. We'll probably be doing more landscaping than preservation at that point, so we don't have the opportunity to really do that tree buffer below the drain, but on all three sides north of the drain, we'll have that easement.
I asked that because it looks like on the drawing that the, I won't say northern part, the northernmost part of that map looks larger than you've got on the other two sides with the trees.
Well, you know, it's, number one, it's a graphic, it's an illustrative graphic, but I don't think that we should be constrained to saying that we need to clear right up to that 20-foot. What we're agreeing to say is, we absolutely will not clear within that 20-foot, but the lots on the north are quite a bit deeper, and to build that building envelope, frankly, we, you know, wooded lots are attractive, and they not only make good neighbors, but they make good sales, and so we've got every, you know, reason to try and preserve as many trees, and because those lots are deeper on the back, it's reasonable to think that we're not going to clear all the way to that 20-foot. We'll leave quite a bit more.
So you just have a 20-foot easement around it, but he could have more, as he just said, on the northern portion of that?
Technically, the way this works is they'd be allowed to remove trees to build the roads and install the utilities. Then the next level of tree clearing would occur when they permit the single-family home sites, and they're allowed to remove trees within the building envelope and 10 feet around the envelope, plus any other areas to install utilities. Now, once a homeowner, you know, gets established there, and they say, I want to put a deck up or a pool, additional trees can come down, in this case, with the exception of that last 20 feet.
That's another question. I was wondering, if I bought one of those lots and wanted to put a pool up, and I'm prohibited from doing so because of the easement, or you'd have to go get relief through the ZBA?
You couldn't get relief through the ZBA.
So I could not put a pool up?
No, you couldn't. And that's where we have to reconcile this with, you know, people need to understand when they come in, that they may not, some of those lots may not be able to support a pool, a deck, a patio, and, you know, because if they don't understand, they may not understand it when they buy it, they're going to understand it when they show up at our counter and ask for it, that, you know, we're not going to offer that relief. Some of those lots are going to be, have some limitations on it. So those bylaws have to be written and projected and portrayed in a way that everybody understands that. You know, individual home people might buy those lots without understanding it, but...
Mr. Winn, Mr. Turner, if I could add just one point of clarification there. Absolutely agree with everything, but, you know, in Michigan, in the Midwest, in Shelby Township, everybody wants a deck.
Township, everybody wants a deck. And I feel confident that every one of these home sites will accommodate a deck or a patio. And why I say that is because from the rear building envelope line, we've got 40 foot to the property line, 20 of those last feet are the tree easement. But we still have another 20 feet, and within that 20-foot, there certainly could be a patio, a deck, that type of thing, you know, obviously with permits and whatnot. But we would anticipate that. And frankly, you could build a 20-foot pool in some of the larger northern lots, you certainly could have a pool as well. But there would not be any deck, any construction, any demolition within that 20-foot. But the homes are designed to accommodate a patio or a deck.
Mr. Chairman, one thing we've also done in similar projects, you may recall Briarwood, that new phase of Briarwood, where single-family, and they had all those wetlands. When those plants come in, they come to the building department, then we review them to make sure the setbacks are okay and the wetland line is marked. And then building makes sure that the wetlands are staked, because there were wetlands real close to some of those home sites. So people have a clear understanding early on what those limitations are on the site. The more we can do to communicate that ahead of time, the less headache it's going to be later on. Because, you know, I know we're, when you do these unique projects, we're inheriting some future problems. It's probably still worth it if we can, even if a couple of trees get removed subsequent to the approvals, if we preserve 80% of them, that's still a benefit. It's worth doing.
Questions? Good, thank you. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. Our remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. Where our recommending body in the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone in the audience is welcome to come up and offer their comments or ask any questions. How this will work is I will take notes of all the questions that are asked and then bring the petitioner up after all those questions are, and to have him answer. Anyone wish to?
Erin Child, Robin Hood Drive, 53476. I had emailed Jim a question about the 20-foot area. If there are dead or sick trees in that area, they should be taken down. Because you don't want this beautiful home built, have a wind come through, and have a tree fall on it. I've got two neighbors south of me that had two huge trees fortunately fall parallel with the lot line. That's not a guarantee. So it's just a concern for that 20-foot area. Get rid of the sick stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, can you sign in, please, Ms.? Will you please sign in?
Sign in, please.
Mr. Chairman, that's a really good point.
Not too often you have somebody telling you to take things, trees down in the tree line. Anyone else? Sure.
Hi, Dave McFarland, 14175, 24-mile road. My question was on the front portion with the smaller lots. Are those not subject to R1A requirements?
No.
Mr. Wind?
No, there are smaller lots, they're entirely smaller building envelope, not the same setback.
Why is that, though?
Well, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah.
Oh.
We have the ability to say yes or no, but that's what they're asking for.
Right. Because this is a planned unit development, that they're asking for some deviation from the zoning.
So that's a deviation from the zoning in that area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there going to be any, I live in that house right on the east side there, where those five new homes are going. Is there a 20-foot tree barrier going to be planted there? Because there's no trees or no?
That's, well, I think Mr. Upnick indicated that they were going to be planting, although I don't know that there's a, do we have a landscape plan? Do you have a landscape? Well, we'll come back up to it. We'll ask the question.
Another question I have was, this temporary road that the construction equipment is going to be driving on, is, I know where that bridge is, it's right on my property line, so I'm going to be putting up with heavy equipment going right next to my driveway? I guess so, huh?
Apparently, we can point, well, I'll have them point out exactly where it's going to go.
Okay, those are my questions. It just seems like there's a lot of houses packed in there compared to the rest of the neighborhoods I see around.
Okay.
And we live next to the Harris drain. And I'd just like to show you, this is the flood plain. Our house is right there, covered in red. And my concern is, when I look at this site map, the, I'm worried about the house that would be behind ours, because I think, looking at this map, it appears that the flood plain goes through our laundry room and comes out our painting room window. Now, if you're going to be bringing in backfill and building this area up, does that mean that we're going to be at more risk of severe flooding? We've never had floodwaters in our house yet. I'm just kind of concerned that those sorts of issues get considered. And I know that this particular board wasn't in charge of approving the building permit for our house when it was built many years ago. But I think you need to be aware that, of things like flood plains.
Okay. One thing that Mr. Wind had mentioned is that the engineers have to be in agreement on this before they're allowed to build anything, you know?
And consider impact to...
Absolutely. That's what the, that's what the, that's what the township engineers specifically are concerned with. That's correct, Mr. Wind.
What we anticipate doing is getting our engineers sit down with their engineer to reconcile those things. And if you want to get a copy of that revised plan showing, we'd be happy to give that to you.
Yeah. My other question has to relate to, it seems like other communities, even the city of Detroit, is going towards establishing wetlands as a natural drain system. And we already have kind of a natural drain system right now with this wetlands area, but now we're talking about developing it. And I just wanted to say that I kind of see, when we bought our house, one of the reasons we bought it was because there was a woods behind it. We paid a lot premium, and I know that there's no guarantee that that land would never be developed, but I just, you know, I was surprised when I heard that this was part of this 20-year development plan to develop this as a regular subdivision. I didn't know, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? Go on twice? Three times? Okay, back to the board. Our, Mr. Upnick, why don't you come on up? The questions regarding the, well, the dead and sick trees?
I think that makes a lot of sense. As we get to that point, you know, we'll have to work within the, within the then-established easement and so forth, or...
Would you do that prior to creating the easement?
Well, what I would recommend is that we work with our team, our engineer, and as we're staking the roads, we'll obviously have the boundary staked at that point, and we can go through either as landscape architects or with the towns park department.
Maybe include Mr. Wind, you know, someone, yeah, so, right.
So everyone's in agreement.
Excellent. Okay, and then the buffer on the southern portion of the development?
Right, adjacent to Mr. McFarland's home, our landscape ordinance right now, or landscape plan within your packet seeks to meet the ordinance. And so what we've done is we've shown street trees, we've shown some significant landscaping along 24-mile road. We know that additional trees will be planted. Mr. McFarland's been terrific to work with, and will continue to do so, and if we have to add some buffer there, we can. As I said, we don't have a 20-foot specific easement there just because there aren't trees, but that's not to say that we can't establish some trees in that area. The bridge, he's right, the bridge is located where, it's essentially an earthen bridge right now with a culvert. Let me point to it, I won't talk.
Can you help yourself?
So that's where, that's what we'll be doing, the crossing, and then remove that as the, as we back our way out of the site.
I mean, pretty much there are two options, is that either they access the property that way, or they go through the subdivision, which I think most, the majority of folks in that area would speak against.
The reality is, is that, you know, we'll be putting down our own stone roads as opposed to, and new roads are built all over the town, right, and very little damage is done, but why risk it on the existing adjacent road? So we would prefer to stay within our own property. And again, we'll, I think we've demonstrated, certainly Mr. DiAgostini through his last 40 years of developing in Shelby, has demonstrated he's a good neighbor, and so we'll continue to work like that.
And the concerns regarding the flood plain and making sure that your neighbors don't get flooded?
I think Mrs. Ashley brings up a good point of how perhaps inaccurate those maps are. You know, it just shows a big red swath through her living room and kitchen. And so that's my point earlier in the evening, that that flood line has to be really delineated. We're obviously obligated to meet all the engineering standards within the drain within the township. I think that we all know that there's state laws that absolutely prohibit us from dumping water on anybody's property or changing the topography in any way to adversely affect our neighbors, and that's why we have the two large detention basins. So we'll continue to be good neighbors and work with them through the engineering phase and make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. Okay, that's the...
Could I also talk about the wetlands? Mrs. Ashley also brought up the wetlands, and I agree. We've got just over two acres of wetlands on the property right now. There's one large pocket in the middle of that wooded area, and then there's a number of little pockets. The little pockets are what we are mitigating. We're going to remove about 0.72 acres of wetlands off the site, and because they are regulated, we are mitigating those in a wetland bank, and we've already started to work with wetland banks on that. So they'll actually be expanded within the watershed area. So the large wetland, it's outlined in that green wooded area, that's actually a wooded wetland, and that will remain as a part of the hydrology of the area and part of the natural features. So we're just going to get rid of a few little pockets, relocate them.
Okay. Back to the board, any final questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sally.
Question regarding Mr. McFarland's concern with the construction entrance close to his driveway. I don't see that. Is that truly happening?
If, may not be noted as such, but on the engineer's laner associates drawing noted three of seven. Down in the back corner, it's actually the topographical survey. You can see right in that area, if you follow the topo lines, you can see where that apple bridge is now, it's kind of an earthen flat area, and it'll remain to be in that. We can note it on the drawings to be that specific spot.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion hearings. Okay, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapprove the request, or table it to evaluate the information further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the enclave PUD 15-25 PUD 1 for the following reasons. The use of this site for single-family homes is consistent with the pattern and scale of surrounding development. This project introduces a form of housing that responds to anticipated market demand and is consistent with the policies of the master plan to provide diversified housing opportunities for residents at all lifecycle stages. And number three, the proposed use of this property for single-family homes will not create nuisance for the surrounding neighborhood, either through the loss of privacy or the creation of nuisances. And number four, a revised site plan addressing all department comments must be submitted to the planning and zoning department for final approval.
Support.
Okay, moved by DeSico, support by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And a chair votes yes. Thank you, appreciate your time. Okay, next item, site plan number 15-17. Caesar Leone, North Sky Management.
Hi, my name's Caesar Leone. I'm proposing building two 15,000-square-foot buildings in central industrial. I built a 22,000 square foot building back like 10 years ago, and it was approved for the 215,000 to be built back then. So I just want to resubmit everything and build the 215,000 square-foot buildings in front.
Okay. Mr. Wind, your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, it's a pretty standard submission. The only outstanding comments I think are noteworthy are the location of the overhead doors and the pedestrian access doors on Building A are reversed. It looks like they're on the opposite side of the building, so it's just a drawing error that needs to be corrected. And there should be, along with a notation, no fire, no parking, fire lane signage is required by the fire department. So everything else is in order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner?
I have a question.
Commissioner, Mr. Kirk.
Mr. Leone, is this one parcel?
Your promotion.
Um, yes.
So I know one of the comments was for shared parking, but if it's going to be commonly owned, there won't be a need for that?
Yeah, it's all the parking lots, they all connect, so it's all one parcel.
One owner right now?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve the site plan for Caesar Leone, site plan number 15-17, subject to the submission of revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item, site plan number 15-14, Pasquale Acavetti, 6689, 25-mile road. Petitioner's representative here. If I get your name and address for the record?
Tom Kellogg, Lerner Associates, 17001, 19-mile road, Clinton Township.
Okay. Who do you have for us?
Here tonight to request approval for the, this project. This, I think this is the second time that you've seen it, and Mr. Thompson had written a point-by-point response to the comments from the last meeting. Basically, we're here to answer any questions you may have regarding the changes that we've made.
Okay. Mr. Wind, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, this was tabled at one of the last April meetings because of a number of just submission deficiencies, not really related to the design. So when I provided the revised review, I kind of showed you there were strikeouts or read text how they've responded. In almost all cases, all the comments have been addressed satisfactorily. There's a couple minor adjustments we have to make, understanding this is preliminary, that this really, all this does is authorize them to go to begin engineering drawings. So there's a couple minor things I'd have to reconcile with Mr. Kellogg and Mr. Thompson, but nothing of a substantial nature that would should get in the way of them moving on to the next step.
Okay, so there's still a, there's still a public comment?
There's no additional public comment at the final review unless people just show up, there's no notice requirement for the final review.
Okay.
So if there's anybody that still wanted to have comment, this would be a good time to do it.
Okay.[1749.28] All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to comment? This isn't a public hearing, but I see some extra folks here. Nope. Okay. Back to the board. Any questions?
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Viere.
Mr. Nguyen, some of the statements you've made don't correspond to the answers that the applicant has placed. Let's talk about item two. Will you explain that for us?
Well, item number two was that they show West Bay Exploration Gas Main easement along the eastern boundary of the site, and that the easement boundary should be shown, and their response was, the location of the easement shown, the landscaping plan does not reflect that comment that the easement will be used for landscaping. So, there's an area where they still need some reconciliation. They said it's going to be used for landscaping, but there's no improvements in that area. So, if they're going to use it for landscaping, then show some landscaping along there. So, that would be an area where they hadn't completely resolved that item.
And number three?
Number three, show typical dimensions for the setbacks. The setbacks are shown and labeled, but are not fully compliant with R1B. Side yard setbacks are 7 and 11 feet with 24 feet between units, not 18 feet.
Has that been resolved?
No.
When would it be resolved?
They can just make the correction, the adjustments on the plan, and resubmit it to us. There's plenty of room on the site. These lots are big enough that that shouldn't be a problem. It's just that if they came in and submitted a site plan or a plot plan, building department wouldn't know that's 24 feet, not 18.
Number 14?
Number 14. This relates to the building width, and they meet the width requirements, but they labeled them the wrong way. They measured them at the road edge, not at the setback. They're fine at the setback, but not at the road edge, so...
Are they in compliance with what needs to be done?
Yes, they're in compliance, they're just labeled incorrectly.
And 14E?
Will retention base and pond be used with... They will not provide a fence. They won't need a fence, which is helpful.
The requested setback between units is 24 feet, not 18?
Right. And again, they need to just put that note on there correctly. Most of these are notational issues.
I think that's all I got, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner.
I move to approve the preliminary plans for Smith Farm Site Condominiums, number 15-14, subject to submission of a revised site plan addressing any remaining department comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Viere.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And a chair vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, under new business, Sahara Metropolitan Grill.
This is for informational only. If anybody's been to that particular development, it's on the west side of Market Street, it's in that shopping center, used to have the Starbucks. They've had some temporary outdoor seating on the Market Street side of the building for years. They've been approved, and apparently, it's been very successful, and he's been very successful. He's got a liquor license now, and he'd like to do something permanently out there. I did talk to the landlord, because sometimes the tenants and the landlord don't tell each other what they're doing. So, I shared with the landlord. He's generally in favor of it, but I wanted to kind of share it with the commission to see if you had any concerns. You know, the biggest issue in that area was to encourage outdoor activity, and Market Street, that side of Market Street, doesn't have pedestrian activity. So, this might add a little life to that area. I think it's a favorable thing to look at, actually. He just... Before he went and did engineering plans and submitted something, he really wanted to get a little feedback from the commission. So, I'm supportive of it.